Thank you. The next item is the action on the agenda. Dr. Scheiger?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, will they entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Don, second by Karen. Accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and none. So move. Action on the minutes. And that would be from our meeting on Monday, September 24th. That should be included in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting on September 24th as presented.
I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as posted for Monday, September 4th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Action on vouchers, Mr. Pierce.
I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $972,405.50 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept the vouchers as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So move. Student council report.
So at the high school, we finished up planning the week. We had activities night and it went well. We had a lot of fun and danced. It was very good. And now we're just getting ready for our November blood drive and starting to plan that.
Okay. Any questions that the student council has? I did skip the public participation because there was no one signed up. Building and department announcements. Dr. Scheiger, who do you have on first?
All right, with that, Mr. Bill Horn will come on up.
There we go. Good evening. At the high school, like everybody in the district, we had a depression development day today. We had staff working through a number of different data points for students. Actually, at the high school, they worked through last year's ACT and ACT Aspire data, applying it to their instruction, as well as looking at the student connectedness survey. The survey students took this year about how well they are connected here at school. Lots of other things going on at the high school. The band, just some other announcements. The band had an excellent weekend. They took first place at the SOC Invitational. And this next weekend, on Saturday, they have the state championships, so they are geared up and ready to go. In fact, we have two band members with us here today that reminded me that, or Mr. Pierce reminded me that we've got to get them to the band today, to the band practice tonight. On all the fall sports, today was the first half of the girls' golf state tournament. So Mr. Hamlin was up there with them for part of the day today. Cross country, it has a conference meet this Friday. Lots of things going on. One thing that I will mention too is that it should have been shared with you. If not, we'll make sure to share it tomorrow. Is the Red Hawk Report, the first edition of the Red Hawk Report. That is the high school newsletter. It's actually about 16 pages of information about what's going on at the high school and the way to try to connect with our families and the community. Lots of things that are there going on.
Okay, at the K-3 level, we're going to try and tie our comments to our strategic plan. So I'm going to talk about some of the things we're doing in the area of relationships, climate, and culture. Mr. Bill Horn mentioned a connectedness survey. Our student services team will be, has administered a survey to second graders on up, and we are going to be examining that data to make sure that our students are feeling connected to at least one person. That's a common goal in all of our K-3 schools is to increase the connectedness. And our PBIS teams are working hard at activities around that goal as well.
And with the teaching and learning goal in our strategic plan, in the K-3 world, I'm working with a group of teacher leaders from each grade level, and we are putting together a spoken sequence for all of our literacy and math so that we can make sure that we have guaranteed a Bible curriculum. So no matter which teacher a child has, they're going to be learning the same things in all of those classrooms.
Speaking with the 4K3 strategic objective, community engagement, the goal is we will engage all stakeholders and nurture partnerships to strengthen our community. With parent-teacher conferences coming up, we have parents group working real hard to create welcoming environments for our families, as well as picking up communication with our families to make sure that they know when they are, so they can attend.
All right. Buildings and grounds. I know I say this every year, but it disappoints me every year. One night shirt, by the way, Mr. Pierce. We purchased our salt supply for the year and are preparing snowplow contracts. That's always been disappointing for me. And also, as some of you have seen, our, what about the projects on the Department of Justice School Safety Grant is underway. There's through about half of the schools with shatter resistant film installation. So that's exciting to see that moving forward.
In the world of HR, we are currently in reporting season. We are reporting with the federal government for the EEOC, as well as we're working on ACA reporting, which will be due in January, and the DPI staffing report, which is our 1202 that we have to do on an annual basis, which takes all the demographics of our employees and shares that information with DPI.
At the middle school, under relationships, climate, and culture, last year we had a group of students paint a mural in our cafeteria with the message of being the nice kid. And we had the creator of that quote come and visit the middle school on the 21st. So that was exciting for the students who helped create the mural to be able to be a part of that photo. And last Friday, we had our 54th national convention at the middle school. Thanks to Mr. Verwick for coming in and speaking at that awesome event. And our social studies teachers, once again, nailed it out of the park with a great engagement and experience for our students about how we select people of leadership.
And, just a couple of things to point out that were, you know, a little beyond some of the normal things. Shout out to Chris Rockman from our department, who took on star testing for us this year. It was new to our department, new to her, and she just stepped up like a champ. And I think star testing went off great. It's a nice screener to start the year for a lot of our lower level kids. And another big project that was really cool was shout out to Neil Luckey. He helped us put together a wireless solution for the stadium. So we now, or we did not have network connection out to the stadium. We want to have a wireless solution. Very affordable solution that we can move it to the stadium wherever it gets moved. But we actually used it with Mr. Pierce's band production when they actually had Wi-Fi for the judges. So, good stuff.
Woo-hoo!
Before we decide just a couple of opportunities for students to share this month. First, all of our sixth graders got to experience the McKenzie Environmental Center for their outdoor education field trip. Despite all the rainy weather, I wanted to give the staff a great shout out for all their flexibility. I know in many instances, they went to plan B and C for indoor activities. One of them this year was indoor archery, which the students really enjoyed. It was a neat experience for them there. In that same vein, the leadership opportunities for students at Northside, October is when we begin our student council. Also, we'll have elections here shortly. They're just inspired by the middle school convention just last week. We also want to give a shout out to our Northside Student News Group, student publication to kind of share a bird's eye view of what Northside's all about through the eyes of a student. We had interviews on Friday, and we have about 15 to 20 students participating in that publication. It should be coming out a little bit later this week. And lastly, our safety patrol will be starting in the next week or so. Just trying to have even more leadership opportunities for students in our school and keeping our sore expectations in mind. Most importantly, being safe.
Good?
Good.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Red Hawk recognition.
I appreciate it. And we'll start with our first recipient, and I'll have John give the introduction.
Yeah, absolutely. On behalf of the district, we'd like to recognize Kim Graff. Kim, if you could come on up. A round of applause for her. We have read locally that Kim was recognized as a Wisconsin woman veteran of the year by the Department of Veteran Affairs. She served in the Marine Corps as a chemical, biological, radiological, and nuclear specialist. Did I get that right? Yeah, very good. Excellent. In addition to that, she was recognized for her service with various veteran groups throughout the state, specifically for the protection of military families while they're on active duty. So many thanks for your service, and please accept this recognition on behalf of the district.
All right. And for our next two recipients, I'm going to have Principal Bill Horn come on up and give the recognition.
All right. So for our second round of recognition tonight, and we have two high school students that have a pretty special distinction. Each year, there's, in the nation, there's 1.5 million students that take the PSAT. It's a practice SAT, but it's also used for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Within that, so that's 1.5 million students across the country that are taking this test. We had two very special students that received quite a recognition based on how they did in that test. First, I have Rebecca Parker. She would come on up. Rebecca is a commended student, so all those 1.5 million students, 35,000 are recognized as commended students. Rebecca Parker is one of those commended students. We'd like to thank her parents for coming tonight as well. We have a second student that took the exact same test. If Marilla Smith would come on up here. I remember that 1.5 million, did I say that number yet? Students who took this exam, 16,000 were recognized as a semifinalist and have an opportunity to apply to be a finalist in the, I mentioned, merit scholarship. But Marilla, they cut up 16,000 out of 1.5 million nationwide. We're very proud of her.
You're in here. You're in.
They're pressured to be doing it. It just don't work. Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Rebecca, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the Strategic Planning Committee Report, and Karen.
Okay, I guess I will do the report. And by virtue of having everyone on the committee, please chime in if I miss this because I'm going to do it off the top of my head. But we met last week, right here in this room, and after some initial housekeeping duties, kind of evolved into a roundtable format so that we could engage each other and the community folks that attended equally. And had the administrative folks done a little homework for us on some pieces or à la carte items, if you will, relative to potential building solutions or pieces, and generated some numbers for us to digest on if we did this and this and this, but not that, that type of thing. So we kind of, with a real lengthy discussion, walked through maybe building by building or at least piece by piece, some of those menu items, and digested what those, at least, estimated numbers would be, and combined some of them in different combinations. And quite honestly, had an excellent meeting. Great, great input from the folks in the audience, likewise from the board members. And everyone was engaged. It was, in my view, the best meeting yet, as far as getting people on the same page and trying to help us move forward. So I think in the vein of structure for this week, Thursday's meeting, and next steps, I think it'll be a little, a little of the same that I discussed about. We talked that not being aware of any other individuals or citizens that have a solution that they want to present, and then certainly you can still do that, but without knowing that there's any, that there's any of those out there yet, we're probably going to follow the format that we did at last week's meeting, in that we're going to again walk through some of those pieces or à la carte items, if you will, with some more numbers, some more refinement. We're going to solicit input from folks that choose to attend, and we'd like to encourage you and anybody that you contact or come in contact with to come to that. We value what folks tell us and what they can input. And it was, it was done very, very well, and it was respectful and productive, and we're hopeful that we can recreate that again Thursday night. So I guess I'd open it up to the rest of the committee if I missed kind of summarizing what happened there. I guess that's kind of...
We're going to present, I think there's going to be five options.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Don. I guess I should have hinted that. We kind of, on a whiteboard, sort of drew a grid, if you will, and came up with four and then a sub one. So four to five options, if you will, that we have charged the admin and building and architect folks with getting us a little bit more concrete numbers on, if you will, and start to sift through what some of the combinations might look like. We quite honestly eliminated one that they had gotten back to us with a, with a number that we just all felt was undoable and didn't jive with anything that we thought we could, could advance. So we are finding our way toward, toward commonality or things that I think we can all support and get behind. So like I said, I felt it was the best meeting we've had yet by far.
And I would just like to echo what Joe said about the community input. Hopefully, on Thursday, August 14th, we, we don't necessarily, are not looking for an additional plan, we're just looking for input. If we're, if we're talking about a specific project or plan, if you agree with it, that's great. If you don't agree with us, let us know what you don't like about it, whether it's the cost, the layout, whatever the case may be. Feel free to invite everyone, your mailman, if he's a district employee or lives in the district of Milton. This has, the more people here, the better. We can get a better, better feel of the community and whether or not we're taking the right steps or not. Any, any other committee members you think? Okay.
Just a big reminder that that meeting is Thursday here at 6:30 in this room.
Okay. Very good, thank you, Joe. The next item is the Human Resources Committee Report. We met on Friday, October 5th. We had a couple of things on the agenda. One is discussion on job descriptions. And basically, what HR is doing is they're, they're kind of chunking by departments. They're going through all of the, the job descriptions, making sure they're accurate and up to date. The first one that you, you folks will be, the rest of the board members will be getting after tonight's meeting, will be from the Student Services Department. And we'll go through those, we'll probably talk about those at a, at an upcoming meeting for your approval and support.
Right, we want to send those out to you to listen off tomorrow morning. One is to give you a contact before they were sent out, so Student Services Department, and then also we'd be the recognition of operations, I'm sure, if it comes in.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add on that, Chris? Okay. The second item was, it's called Safe Schools Online Training Video. Chris, I'll let you talk a little bit about that in detail. You know, it's a, it's a pre-service, it's online, it's for, there's lots of training available for our staff.
Absolutely, Tom. What Safe Schools is, is an online training resource that is part of our liability insurance, and we are setting that up, starting in September. And we are working on testing it out with a few administrative teams or administrative members and district office employees. So we're looking to see what it can do, how it can report on who does what training. There's a lot of DPI required training that our employees have to do, and this system would be able to track who has done what. And for example, there's the child abuse and neglect training that we have to do each, every five years. So if somebody's hired mid-year, it's keeping in track of that individual that was hired mid-year. So then, five years from that date, this system will be able to help with that.
Okay. Any questions, the HR committee? Okay. Moving on to new business. Thank you, Chris. The first item under new business is the temporary borrowing, borrower, borrowing.
All right. There's a memo in your packet regarding the short-term cash flow borrowing. We've talked about this in committee, as well as the board over the years. We did look into different borrowing options. The, this $4.3 million we're looking to borrow. Remember, that is in, as we short-term borrow, is to cover expenses between July and December when we get state aid. And obviously, we're, with our fund balance being reasonably healthy, we can carry that through much of that time period. But then we do need to look at a couple of, a couple of times in November, and then again in March, April, we need to borrow again. And so after looking at a few of the different options, the finance committee did ask us to look at not only a one-year note, but also a combination of line of credits. And after looking at how the rates came back, our recommendation is to do a, similar to last year, a $2.4 million over a one-year note at 2.38778 percent, and then a line of credit at, that is at 3.49 percent for the 1.9 remainder. We did look at additional lines of credit at that amount and at the duration of a few months that we would need. The savings is pretty nominal. We would need to look at three lines of credit in order to cover that. And there's not a significant savings in doing that. And so we will be able to recover some of the annual cost interest with a one-year note as, as we aren't using all of it initially, we'll be able to save money and put that back towards it. And so that pretty much comes a wash. And so from a bookkeeping standpoint, our recommendation is to do the 2.4 one-year and the 1.9 line of credit for the various institutions and percentages that are, interest rates that are listed in the memo.
Karen, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing from Robert W. Baird with BMO Harris Bank in an amount of not to exceed 2.4 million at a net interest rate of 2.38778 percent, and a total net interest cost of $51,576 from October 24th, 2018 to September 2018, 2019. A total amount not to exceed 2.4 million pursuant to section 67.12 parent eight, parent eight, parent one. And I believe that they use the recommended little bubble.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Can we have a discussion?
Yes, we can.
Just a quick question. So we've been borrowing for a long time to kind of shore up the cash flow. What are the plans to get us to a point where we have a fund balance where we don't have to borrow short-term borrowing?
Well, the, as you can see over the last, you have this document, you borrowed a lot more in the past. We were able to, with a higher fund balance a few years back, we were able to do cash flow, a line of credit for our savings. We obviously were at that point where we need a little bit more. As you recall, some of our, our expenses go up. This year, we do have a balanced budget. We have adopted our, although our spending went up 4% for additional staff, remember also that includes any type of earlier payments. For example, Go Right Way, we're now paying them in August, that payment. Any grants that we apply for, we have to pay for on the front end. And so those are all offset with additional state revenue. That state revenue doesn't come until December and again later on in the year. So the, the fund balance, what we could do is, what we had done in many other years is not put additional money towards maintenance items or towards other items and put that into fund balance. So it's kind of a, you know, how you would like us to, to handle some of the expenses that come down the road. We've been checking off a bunch of things on the list as far as the, the maintenance concerns. That money, for many years, has gone into fund balance to help build it up. So there are different things we can do. We can not spend certain areas and save it. So it's, I guess it's a, as a board choice as to how you'd like us to look at spending big picture wise, either put it in fund balance or try to eliminate some of the other items that we have on the docket.
So if I understand it correctly, then it sounds like, having really looked at, at possibly getting a plan in place to, so we don't have to do the short-term borrowing as of yet. But there's possibilities that there are things that we can do to eventually get there.
Absolutely. Depends on if, if, what your velocity is as far as the short-term borrow versus taking care of needs.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that would be a task for, for the administration to do, is figure out how to get that, that general fund up to a point where we don't have to do the short-term borrowing and, and still, and still address the needs that we do. So I guess, you know, you know, $46,500 a year in interest, I mean, that's just like burning money. And, you know, I'm going to go ahead and, and probably vote to, to approve this, but I got to tell you, I, I would personally like to see administrations start coming up with a plan. And I'm not suggesting that it's going to happen in one year, but at least over a period of time, hopefully a short period of time, that administration can come up with a plan so that we don't have to do this short-term borrowing. Because otherwise, you know, next year I might not, I'll probably actually vote against it, just because this, to me, I think we need to, to address this and get this problem fixed.
I just want to comment that this was something we discussed in the Assembly, Education Committee, because every school district is having the same problem. And there was actually bills introduced to make payments earlier by the, by the state that were shot down by certain financial forces that kept it from coming to fruition. So hopefully, we can reintroduce it this year and hopefully get aid sooner so we can take care of short-term borrowing.
That would definitely help, but until that happens, we, we have to, you know, we have to deal with what we have. So hopefully, that will come very soon though.
And I think we, as a board, would have to give administration that direction.
Yes.
So if we want to, if we want to build up our, our, our fund balance versus doing some ADA compliance upgrades or some maintenance upgrades or something like that.
Well, it doesn't have to be maintenance or upgrades or ADA. I don't know why you threw those two things out.
I just picked them up out of my head.
Okay. But there are definitely ways we can save money without affecting the needs of the kids and the students and still try to, you know, like I said, it's probably not going to happen in, you know, over the course of one year, but we should at least be getting to approach a point where we don't have to borrow so much and eventually hopefully don't borrow anything.
We will definitely be looking at those things. Looking back, in 2010, we, our interest was 57,000. The previous year was 126,000, 175,000, 175,000. So we have taken steps to reduce it, obviously, as, as costs have gone up and as some of the expenses that, with needing additional staff, et cetera, we are able to get it down for a bit. It's, you know, it's what it is right now. We will definitely look at those options, but then what I would do is look at what are those, what are those potential options and have the board weigh in, so that way we can own this collectively if we're going to go a different direction for, for how to do with that.
Okay. We, we used to put in, the percentage of budget goes up, we try and increase the fund balance that much every year. And we try always put extra in too. And we, over time, we gradually got it up some, but boy, it takes quite a bit. So if they wanted to borrow, it'd be better if Don could get us the money quicker.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
I hope, I hope there's an answer.
Yep, okay. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call as requested by Mr. Pierce. All those in favor, we'll do a roll call in approving the amount and the motion that Mike made. I'm not going to read it all again. Diamond?
Yes.
Mike? Yes. Tom? Yes. Don?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. And the second part of that, we need another motion. Make a motion to adopt resolution authorizing temporary borrowing from First Community Bank and not not to exceed 1.9 million at a net interest...
and not to exceed 1.9 million at a net interest rate of 3.49% for a total amount not to exceed 1.9 million pursuant to state Section 67.12 parent A, parent A, parent 1. And this is to make up the rest of, this won't be for very long, but this doesn't have a total amount of interest in it. So I don't know what the cost is on the interest on this one, but, any other?
Second motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? We have a second motion. Okay.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Next item is early college credit program, Start College Now.
All right, it's that time of the year in your packets. You do have, these are high school students who are looking to take college credit second semester. Just a reminder, this is the formerly known as Youth Options. We actually brought four of the new names last year for the fall semester. But the state divided one program into two because it's easier to do apparently. We have Start College Now for all students taking technical school credits. So there you'll see that we have 20 students taking a total of 56 credits. I will note, however, that the six students who are wishing to take medical terminology, we actually do have a staff member on Staff Now, and we actually have six other students on that. So I believe I'm going to offer that second semester. We are working with Blackhawk Tech to get their curriculum, and we'll be offering those credits in-house. So even though you would be approving those students to take that because there's an October deadline, we are going to offer those in-house, and those students likely will be taking it in-house this year. And then the second half of this is the Early College Credit Program. That's the University of Wisconsin program. You see that there are, actually, there's two students taking a total of 15 credits. Are there any questions at all? Good news for you, Tom. It used to be we needed to have board signatures on those with the new forms. It's now just school district authorities, so we would take care of all the signatures for you, so.
And that is not an action item required by the board. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. And as long as you're right there, let's go on to discussion on popular action, early graduation requests. And I believe we have 13.
Yes, there are 13 students on there. There are 12 seniors and actually one junior who came to us with a few credits, and she will be graduating at the end of her junior year. All 13 of these students I have met with and have spoken with families. They all, at the end of, the seniors at the end of first semester, and our one junior at the end of the school year, we threw her in with these. They will have completed their 24 credits, these are graduation and all the state requirements. Each of them are, will have completed their academic and career plan and their financial literacy courses as well. So they'll meet all the district and state requirements for graduation.
Okay, very good. Very ambitious, academic students to be able to do.
Yeah, it's great. All of them, I spoke with each of them. They all have plans, whether it's going to the workforce. Many of them are actually going to be taking tech school credits starting second semester.
Okay, thank you.
Do they still present their career plan?
Yes, in December, actually, all 13 of these students will be presenting their academic and career plans, so we may be asking the group to help with those come December. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shager, even when they graduate early, do we get post-game aid for them if they graduate early? Or do you only give it for half the year, when students graduate early?
Well, our funding is based on September.
Their Friday count, yes.
So they're here now, absolutely. And then there's the secondary count in January, but the September count is our funding base.
Okay. Moving on is...
I need a motion on that one.
Yeah.
That needs approval. The early request.
I made a motion to approve the early graduation request as presented.
Second.
A motion made by Diamond and signed by Karen. The, for the graduation request, all of the favors signified by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on then, for the third Friday in September.
In your packet, you have two handouts. The first one is the pretty rainbow sheet. That is the physical number in our buildings. This year, we're at 3479, and last year, we were 3494. So we are down a little bit in our physical count in the buildings. This includes residents attending Milton and open enrollment students. Then the next sheet is, this is what our DPI funding is based on, the blue sheet here. And this year, we're at 3590, which is up 27 students for our funding from last year. This would be, we take the physical count, we take out the non-resident students, we add our resident students going elsewhere, and that's how you come up with our DPI funded number, which is our resident students. And it puts the differences from last year on the bottom there, so you could see some notable variances. One being our open enrollment ends are down 37 students from last year. Our three K, or three K three numbers are up 18. Couple of areas of difference there.
And we budgeted for a plus 21.
So for our financial count, we're up 27, we budgeted 21. So this is one of those, see, like, in the stool, around our state aid. And then the third one is the property evaluation.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. The next item is action on the Open Enrollment Alternative application. I believe we have five out and zero in. Kim, is it?
That's correct.
And you said that board do not attend Milton, or did they ever attend Milton?
Um, they, two of them, three of them did not. Two of them, no, excuse me, two did not attend Milton ever, and two did at one point. But they just, they are, they did not attend 18.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion to accept that application.
I make a motion, we accept the 2018, 2019 Open Enrollment Alternative application as presented.
Got a second?
Got a second now.
Okay, any discussion? None. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oath, both. Motion carried. Action on the staffing report we received in our packets. I believe we have two letters of employment or contracts and zero resignation. Make a motion to accept the staffing report. Got a second?
Second.
Motion made seconded to accept the staffing report as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both. Motion so moved. Gifts and donations. I mean, it does it again. We have total of $1,989.14. Move to accept the gifts and donations with the gratitude of the board. I'll second the gratitude. Motion made and seconded to accept donations. Favor signified by saying aye.
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 Both. And again, thank you to the community, business, individuals, organizations, and so on. Very generous. Meeting dates, upcoming board and committee meeting, obviously, we have one on the 11th.
11th at 6:30 here is the Community Facility Planning Workshop Number Two. We have a joint finance and transportation committee at 11:05 in the morning on October 18th. And that meeting is in district office. What kind of a...
11:00.
11:00 AM. October 22nd is our next school board meeting at 6:30 here. And then we'll look to schedule another, another meeting like earlier tonight when we're done here.
Okay. At this point, I would accept the motion to go on to executive session.
Also move.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to go into executive session. First date set is 19/28 and 1/25 F, considering appointments, motion come, please, and evaluation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does that roll call? Roll call? This should be roll call.
Yep, roll call.
Okay. Karen?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 Karen?
Yes.
We are in executive, executive session. Thank you for coming. Couple more new faces in the crowd. We're glad to see that. Thank you for coming. Hopefully, you'll come back on Thursday.